Good afternoon. It is three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Present.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Present.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have corn.
Thank you. And seeing that all five directors are present, we will skip item three. And item four, Pledge of Allegiance, we'll do on Monday. Item five, Rules of Procedure, counselor?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the Board. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, Public Input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the Board today?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. Item seven, Human Resources, Resources Report. We'll do Monday?
Monday.
Moving on to action items. Item eight, Public Hearing Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-three, Power Purchase Agreement with Trident Mission Springs LLC. It is recommended to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-three and authorize the General Manager to negotiate and execute a power purchase agreement and solar facility lease agreement with Trident Mission Springs LLC to design, build, and construct approximately four megawatts of renewable solar energy at seven M S W D sites. The public hearing will be on Monday. Did we have a staff report today?
Uh, no, I just wanted to update the Board. Uh, the power purchase solar lease agreements have been finalized. Uh, some of the most recent changes to the document were legal language related to limit of liability, security bond values, and installation area related to well twenty-seven. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our staff, specifically Danny and Amanda, Kenwood Energy, who's on the call as well, Staten Bridge Renewable Energy, and S P M P for all their hard work in getting this document done. Uh, they were working on it as late as even last night and earlier today to get some of the last language completed. Uh, but we will be updating the agenda packet with all the final documentation and unnecessary attachments. We do have folks on the call, specifically Tim Holmes. Danny's here. If you have any questions relating to this item, I know we've talked about it at length for for several years, but uh, if there are any questions, we're available.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board? Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin? Director Meyer. Alright, we'll move on to item nine. Ordinance Two Thousand Twenty-four dash zero-two and Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-four, Updating and Amending Administrative Code Titles, one through three. It is recommended that the Board adopt Ordinance Two Thousand Twenty-four dash zero-two and Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-four, updating and amending titles one, two, and three of the district's administrative code.
Thank you, President Sewell. Uh, we've talked about this at our last meeting, even talked about it again at our most recent workshop. Uh, all the changes that have been discussed at the workshop are now included in the document redline and final version. Uh, we've seen the presentation that we provided at the workshop. We can give that presentation again today. Or we can just ask general questions.
Would anyone like to see the presentation again?
No.
Any questions, Director Martin?
Nope.
Director Meyer. Director Duff?
I have no question. Um, I will be asking that, um, upon approval of this on Monday, that we bring back the Employee Drug and Alcohol Use Policy. As we were just at C F D A and we were reminded that we have new protected classes, and I think we need to re-review to address the protected class that California has enacted um, in regards to those policies and our hiring policies and documents.
Okay. Um, do you feel that would be, um, good for a workshop? Maybe this next workshop?
I have a comment, I mean. I, I just want the general public to know, and I know Director Duff, you're, you're making sure that everything is is correct and all the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed. But ever since I've been here in town, since the early eighties, I've never seen any evidence of there being a drug problem anywhere within Mission Springs Water District. And I don't think there ever will be, so I just want to make that clear for the public to understand that you, you, you're not doing that because we do have a problem. We're doing it to prevent any future problems in. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President, questions? And I have nothing further. Thank you. Item ten, Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-five, Designation of Mission Springs Water District Positions Authorized to Apply for Federal Disaster Assistance on Behalf of the District. It is recommended to approve Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-five, authorizing the following positions within Mission Springs Water District to apply for federal disaster assistance on behalf of the District, General Manager, Assistant General Manager, Director of Finance, and Director of Operations. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Director of Operations, Danny Friend, to give this presentation or discussion. Danny?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, members of the Board. Good afternoon. This is a pretty straightforward request. It's a formality with COW E S. Uh, what I wanted to just hit on first is what started this. Uh, back in two thousand twenty, we had the pandemic. We, we opened our E O C at a level, level three, low level at the, at the uh, direction of the county. Uh, we changed our hours, uh, made sure that we had our team separated so that we could uh, keep our, our, our ability to work here as essential workers. Uh, later followed that with a pandemic plan, and then we brought in the, the different disinfection processes that we did, and we had to buy extra chemicals. So through that entire pandemic period, uh, shortly after that came an opportunity for a grant to cover the COVID cost. We applied for it. We were approved. We have been going through the FEMA process for some time, and then when it changes over, and the reason I bring that up, it, it may be, uh, several of you that are on the Board today may not have been here for that FEMA process, but when we went, did a similar process for FEMA to, to authorize us, now we're with COW E S, and surprisingly, they make us go through the same thing. So this is a formality that allows us to go ahead and complete the process with FEMA. As it says on here, with COW E S, excuse me. Um, as it states on here, we're going to authorize these agents. One of the things I would like to point out is we're doing this for a period of three years. And the reason we chose that option is because we are currently working on a Tropical Storm Hillary with FEMA, which will then turn into COW E S. And recently, Steph, Will Wetton has, has participated in, in a grant for hazard mitigation to uh, to take care of our seismic improvements at the Terrace Reservoir. That's in the early stages, but the, the takeaway from that is if this document here, when it passes or when the Board approves, it will actually take us, kick cares for the next three years. We will not have to do this process for the next two grants that we currently have in place. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Item eleven, Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-six, authorizing the General Manager to sign and execute agreements and necessary supporting documents with the Army Corps of Engineers for the Groundwater Quality Protection Program. It is recommended to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-six and authorize the General Manager to sign and execute agreements and necessary supporting documents with the Army Corps of Engineers for the Groundwater Quality Protection Program. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our, um, Engineering Manager, Eric Webb, to give this presentation. Eric?
Yes, thank you, uh, General Manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. Uh, item eleven of this afternoon's agenda pertains to authorizing the General Manager to execute agreements as well as supporting documents to secure funding on behalf of the District with the Army Corps of Engineers. Presently, the District is operating under Section two nineteen, under the two nineteen program with the Army Corps that allows the District to receive federal funding for the project development phases. That includes the environmental, um, planning, design, and construction. So over the next several years, M S W D will be securing federal funding with the Army Corps to ultimately complete the construction of the septic to sewer improvement projects for areas J two, H, I, K, A, and G. And so this map here that you can see, uh, identifies those areas, uh, with the red rectangles. Uh, so Area A is, uh, noted up there in the northwest portion of the map. Um, and actually Areas A and Areas G here are presently under, uh, design with the Army Corps. So, uh, executing Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-six will allow the District to quickly review and execute the necessary procedural funding documents with the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, just as a side note, you'll see also, uh, proposed G Q P P area D three. And that's this right here. And, uh, I will be talking about that particular item. Uh, it's item fourteen of this afternoon's agenda. Um, adding, uh, water line replacements, um, that are in backyard easements for that area. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin?
Yes. Um, Eric, in the, uh, J two, H, I, K area, how many mobile home parks are included in that? Or is there any?
Uh, sir, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I can certainly find out by Monday. But the information I do have, sir, is, uh, Area J two has three hundred and twenty-five properties. I has three hundred and forty-two properties. Um, I'm sorry, H has three forty-two, I has three thirty-four. Uh, K affects two hundred and forty-nine properties. Area A is the most with eight hundred and seventy-eight properties, and G has a hundred and ninety-four. Uh, if you like, I can run down the, uh, linear footage of each of those areas that, uh, sewer will be installed.
No, that, that's a acceptable answer for me.
Okay, sir. I'll find out, um, the mobile homes for Monday.
And one more question. How many years are we looking out before we will have all those hooked up? An estimate?
That's fully dependent upon the, um, Army Corps and, and how funding becomes available. Um, I think the General Manager was going to say something.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes, it is completely based on funding. Uh, when we were, when we approached the public about these assessment districts, we tried, we tried to stay to a format of fifty percent grant, fifty percent, um, paid for by the, uh, by the residents. So we're sticking to that and trying to move forward. So that's, it's, it's a delayed process, unfortunately, and it's based on how much grant funding we can get. This particular item, why it's set up to be for the Army Corps, and we are going, moving down that path because we feel we, we have a very good history with the Corps. We're also going after other state funding as well. So it's both federal and state that goes to this program, but we're setting up the drawings right now. So it's all meets the Corps' um, minimum requirements for bidding and construction.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing further. Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So I know we've talked fifty-fifty in the past, but here we're talking seventy-five, twenty-five in this document?
So that's, so that seventy-five, twenty-five is our match to the funding that we get from the federal government. So if we get a million dollars from them, then we have to come up with that other twenty-five percent. So what ends up hap- so yes, we pay into that, but that's factored into the fifty-fifty mix.
Anything further from the Board? Thank you, Eric. Item twelve, Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-seven, Amending Classification and Compensation Plans for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-four, Twenty-five. It is recommended to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-four dash twenty-seven, amending the classification and compensation plans for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, this resolution, amending the classification and compensation is pretty straightforward. Our plant's coming online. Uh, we'd like to have a, um, excuse me, a wastewater operator three added to, a grade three added to the salary matrix to complement that plant. Um, there is going to be one change. I think there was a typo in the staff report, but also the cost, uh, the change in cost, instead of being fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six, is actually ten thousand one hundred and fifty-six. We were looking at the wrong two lines. So I apologize about that, but it will be updated, uh, when you see the document on Monday.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board? Director Martin?
Yeah, just one, one comment, and it's, uh, dealing with, uh, um, with grants and, and it's been my experience in looking around different communities and everything, that generally speaking, grants are, um, distributed, um, based on, um, matching funds with the, with whatever that district or that agency books in, the federal grants will, will match it. That, that's kind of a unwritten rule, but that's what happens most frequently. And it's so neat to be able to fund the Nancy Wright regional water thing and have, have that ju- just about completely paid for by grants. It's truly amazing, so.
Right. Any questions? Director Duff?
I just want to commend you for looking for ways for our employees to grow and for not being afraid to come to us with growing our, our staffing. And I just want to tell you, thank you for hearing us.
Vice President? Nothing further from me?
Just one quick thing. Actually, I'd like to return the thank you from the Board. The Board supported us several years ago when we added to the wastewater group, knowing that we were going to have this plant coming online. So we did add staff. We have had operators and training for the last several years. And then we also, one of the, when we did our class in comp, a couple of years ago, we also made sure that the certification pay was in there to allow some of our folks to grow. And that's why, when this position becomes operational, we have somebody that can step right into that role. So I appreciate those words from Director Duff. However, it also goes in reverse, if you will, to the Board, because the Board saw our, our state with our direction, if you will, and it's, it's worked out very well for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, California Special Districts Association, C S D A, Two Thousand Twenty-five Committee and Expert Team Participation. It is recommended that Board members or management staff consider serving on one or more of C S D A's standing committees. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, this item is really just for discussion purposes and, and just wanting to see who would be, um, who would like to, if anybody is interested in being part of the C S D A committee.
And I know they have quite a few different, um, avenues to get involved. The Legislative Professional Development, Member Services Committee, Audit Committee, Election Bylaw Committee, Fiscal Committee. The, looking over, I guess, over the weekend and see if there's any that interest you and would, you'd like to get involved with. Director Duff?
Is there any information? I see that some of them say how much, how many times they meet, but is it in person? Is it by Zoom? Could we get that information maybe before Monday, so we would know just how easily we'll be able to participate or not?
We could do that, yes.
Thank you. Travel, travel. Okay, thank you. Could you verify?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Vice President?
Oh, no.
Director Martin? Thank you. Item fourteen, Award of Contract to T K E Engineering for Area D three Waterline and Service Replacement Design Services. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with T K E Engineering Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for design services for the Area D three Waterline and Service Replacement Project and create a new capital job to include design services costs for the Area D three Waterline and Service Replacement Project and include staff time for project management and plan review and ancillary costs in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for a total of sixty-seven thousand dollars. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Engineering Manager, Eric Webb, to provide a presentation for this. Eric?
Yes, thank you, sir. And, uh, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. Uh, item fourteen of this afternoon's agenda item pertains to the District entering into an agreement with T K E Engineering to provide plans and project specifications for the removal and replacement of water lines that are currently in easements behind residences. Specifically, we're going to be talking about Area D three. Having water lines in backyard easements has created some issues for district staff to maintain them. As it happens, the Area D three Septic to Sewer Improvement Project also has water lines in the area that are currently in easements that run through backyard areas. Um, it's staff's intent that while the Area D three Septic to Sewer Project is being constructed, the water lines can also be removed and relocated to the street right of way. Doing this may yield cost savings to the District in that there will be less contractor mobilization costs as opposed to having two separate contracts with two separate contractors operating in the same envi- same area. Now presently, the design of the, uh, Area D three sewer portion of the project is under design by A E COM. Uh, this item, it was previously approved by the Board in April of two thousand twenty-four. Likewise, T K E is currently an approved on-call, uh, consultant, in civil engineering consultant, whose qualifications were reviewed for this project. Uh, they are currently the design engineer for the Area M two Septic to Sewer Project and has proven experience in these type of projects. T K E will use the existing survey data from A E COM, and they're the ones that are doing the septic to sewer portion. Um, they'll take that information from A E COM and, uh, use that for the water line design, and hopefully that'll expedite the delivery of, uh, construction plans for the water line replacement project. Now, it's the intent to solicit construction bids for both the septic to sewer and the water line replacement projects at the same time, under one contract. And, and staff expects that this project will be ready to solicit bids later this year. Finally, staff time, um, finally, staff time in managing this portion of the work and also performing necessary plan checks on the water line and, um, and performing site visits is included in the costs associated with this, uh, with this action. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyer?
Yes. We coordinated with the city and asked them if there's going to be any, uh, road paving or anything in this area?
Um, that is going to be done. I've got a contact at Public Works that I can reach out to.
All right, thank you.
Director Duff?
I'm in full support of this process, the project, what you are trying to do. I just wanted to know if any of our other on-call engineers were given the opportunity to put in bids for this or their proposals for this?
Yes.
And they were not satisfactory, or?
No. Um, we've got, uh, I believe it was from M S, uh, not M S A, M W H and Provost and Pritchard. Those are our three on-calls.
And were they unable to participate, or were their costs too high?
They were not able to participate. And this falls in line with, uh, item, I believe it's item number fifteen as well.
Let me do.
Go ahead.
Let me do it. We did ask A E COM for a price, and it was not acceptable. That's why we went to our on-call services, because, uh, we just didn't feel comfortable with that number and the significant savings to go to T K E. So we did ask for other costs.
Um, I know that you and I, General Manager Macy, have had this conversation before, and I'm not going to go into all the details of it, but I would request that if these other two on-call agencies are never able to participate and are never having the time to help us, then we need to remove them and we need to replace them, because we need to be able to diversify our work to multiple contractors, and this is not a- accomplishing that. So I, I understand why we're in the position we're in and why these are being presented to us this way. But, um, again, I ask that we address our on-call list and we address their availability to, in the future, and if they're not going to be available, remove them and get new additional on-call resources. Thank you.
Actually, um, we are, um, going to be submitting, uh, soliciting, uh, proposals from additional engineers. Uh, we're preparing right now. Um, we're preparing another request for proposals, uh, to expand our suite of, uh, on-call engineers to use.
Vice President?
I'm sorry, and one more thing. Uh, M W H, uh, they are working on the Skyborne Project as well as the Well Twenty-two, uh, Rehab Project. And I think, uh, Provost and Pritchard has submitted something in the past to prepare a, uh, W S A for a development project.
So we're trying to spread the work. It's just unfortunately, when it came to this design, no one else participated. So that's why Eric did what he's doing and putting up. Yep, that's exactly what we're doing.
Vice President?
Um, I think one of the questions, which is kind of not just about this, but about the next one and about others, is my understanding there are some issues with the way that T K E sends their invoices that do not match up with the way we expect the invoices, creating extra work. Is that, uh, something that we can address?
Yes, the specific, that's, that issue is specific to the grant that we were receiving for the Nancy Wright Facility, and we are working through that. Um.
So on all their other work, we don't have any issues with the invoicing at all?
Sometimes it's not as timely as we would like it, because sometimes it goes back several months, but.
That would be a no.
Correct.
Okay. Obviously, it's a project that we need, but I do have a problem, and we brought this up before. When vendors don't submit their invoices timely, because it creates much more work, and then we're not able to do our stuff, have our reports done by our deadlines. And so maybe, um, this is something that we can have Mr. Thornton come here and discuss with us again, because we have, he said that he is, uh, willing to come talk to us, and despite repeated pros- promises, I don't see any improvement in this area. So, um, I just want to put that out there.
We will ask him to attend Monday's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just had one question. I know this is just for the design, but, um, as we start doing some of these removals of the rear water meters and the easements, um, is it the property owner's responsibility to then connect from our new meter in the front of the yard? How does that on-property kind of work happen to get them reconnected?
So in this particular case, since we're already going on their property to work with them to connect their take or abandon their septic tank and things of that nature, uh, it would be the response. We will work with each homeowner, and the question is, is how much do they want to put this on their taxes, or do they want to pay for it themselves? We will work with each of the homeowners to decide how that actually happens, but I believe on this particular contract, it would be the homeowner's responsibility to make that, uh, water line connection.
Okay. And probably opening up a whole can of worms. What happens if we get a property owner that isn't able to financially make that?
We would still do it, and then we would end up putting it on its taxes. So we'll, we'll manage the work. It's just how, how, when will, when will it get paid?
Okay. Vice President? That was. That's all I have. Anything further? Go ahead.
That's very interesting, because I wish we had brought this up on Tuesday, because this was an item in, at Planning Commission. Um, and there was not, I think one of the things we didn't discuss with them is the fact that even though there has been um, talk of, of abandoning these easements, that this is actually something that will cost uh, homeowners, uh, or property owners, and I wish we had discussed that on Tuesday.
That there was going to be a cost associated with the?
Yes. Just because that, that was part of the discussion, and the discussion was, well, we'll talk, we'll try to coordinate things with the city, but I don't think that was ever mentioned. And I'm not saying that it was necessarily our responsibility, but I do think we probably should have discussed that, maybe.
And I'll work with Danny to make sure that my answer was correct, because I know we've done it different ways in different locations. For example, M two is being fully funded for the abatement of the sewers, so the water line's going to be included in that project. But in other areas where the state funding is involved, and that's not something that's being picked up, we'll work through it. So my answer may have been incorrect, because it is going to be a project by project. But we'll get a better answer for you for, on Monday.
Anything further on item fourteen? Thank you. Item fifteen, Award of Contract to T K E Engineering for Temporary Staff Augmentation. It is recommended to authorize- It is recommended to authorize the general manager to negotiate and execute a contract with T K E Engineering for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand dollars for engineering staff augmentation services. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. Again, I will ask our engineering manager, Eric Weck, to give this presentation.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item fifteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to contracting with T K E Engineering to provide engineering service for two days a week to help support the engineering department. T K E's proposal provides experienced staff to help, help us out with plan checks, assisting staff with managing various capital projects and performing occasional project site visits. Now presently, there's two vacancies in the engineering department that recruitments are being actively advertised. The district solicited proposals from other pre-qualified consultants that we have that are on, that are retained by the district. And only T K E showed interest in responding to the request for qualifications. The term of this contract is for three months with the option of increasing the time needed and/or the number of days necessary to provide service for the engineering department until the other openings are filled. Now, if additional contract time is necessary that falls outside of the three months, staff will return to the board for approval before increasing the cost and time of this contract. Is there any questions?
Before we open it to questions, let me just add where we are in the recruitments. We are going to be having a right-fit interview for the engineering technician position. We've gone through one round and we've, we're going to be reaching out to two other people. And then, of course, the office specialist, we have gone through recruitment for that and we have done interviews for that. And we're now working on the right-fit interviews for the top candidate for that project. So it's not something that we see going past three months unless we have an issue with those two recruitments. But they have been moving forward and we are, we do have people identified to fill these positions.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Director Duff? Want me to start on the other side? Director Martin, any questions or comments? Director Meyer?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, for giving us a little bit of an update where we're at. Sometimes I see these prices we're paying, I'm saying to myself, we could hire a full-time person, but we can't hire an all-around full-time person to take care of everything we need. So I appreciate that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President?
Just reiterate what I said last time.
Director Duff?
I will also reiterate what I said last, and I'm also concerned that with the seventeen or however many projects T K E has, do they actually have the staff to be able to dedicate someone or people two days a week, eight hours a day for three months to do this where they won't be interrupted by T K duties on other projects? So I do have a concern and I'd like some sort of, some sort of response from their owner to, to tell us how they're going to mitigate those kind of interruptions during that, that temporary employee's time here. That's concerning to me and I just want to voice that concern. Thank you.
We will have Mike Thornton here on Monday.
Thank you. Item sixteen, public water and sewer lift station enforced main systems construction agreements and water and sewer bonding agreement for project Viento development. It is recommended to approve the public water and sewer lift station enforced main systems construction agreements and the water and sewer bonding agreement for the project Viento, commercial development project, and authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the agreements. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask Eric Weck, our engineering manager, to provide a presentation for this action item. Eric?
Thank, thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item sixteen of this afternoon's agenda requests the board of directors' approval to execute the public water and sewer construction agreements and the water and sewer bonding agreements with the, with the Viento development. Typically, for developments that construct water and sewer improvements, there's a construction agreement that is in place to ensure that the system is constructed to district standards and specifications. Concurrent with that, there is also a performance and warranty bond that provides protection against the possibility of the developer defaulting. The warranty bond ensures that the warranty period is covered during the one-year timeframe and covers any necessary deficiencies that can arise during the one-year warranty period. I'd like to add also that prior to that one-year warranty period expiring, engineering staff goes out and reviews the project from beginning to end, looks at the fire hydrants, looks at water valve lids and manholes and things like that to make sure that, that during that one-year warranty period, there isn't any defects that arise. So finally, the payment bond covers potential claims and potential claims by suppliers and subcontractors for labor and materials that are incorporated on the project but not paid for by the developer. Now, board approval and authorization of the general manager to execute these agreements does not affect the district's budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin?
Nope, doesn't cost us anything. I have nothing to say.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Item seventeen, authorization for purchase of booster pump control valves for the terrace booster station. It is recommended that the general manager be authorized to approve the purchase of six level booster pump control valves for the terrace booster station from Core and Main for a not-to-exceed amount of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. Director of, Director of Operations Danny Friend will be providing some information. Danny?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Once again, good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. I want to start with apology. I didn't have a lot of time to put this, but I wanted to provide a slideshow or at least some pictures that gets you to understand what a booster pump control valve is, as well as the word is Clayval. Clayval, yeah. So Clayval is a manufacturer of automatic control valves. We use them, we have roughly a hundred and six of them in the system for various applications. The ones that are being spoken about today are booster pump control valves. We take a pump, we pump water to a different level and it allows it to open smoothly, eliminating a hammer in the startup. It closes slowly, eliminating said hammer and surge in our system. And it keeps that water from draining back to where it came from. And as this project is part of our ongoing rehab for our booster stations and one of the things that we discovered last year, these valves weren't intended to be part of the booster station rehab. But during our normal annual maintenance, we saw quite a bit of deterioration. And after pricing out the cover and various pieces to, to make it or to correct and then put them back into new status, we were almost the cost of a new valve. So staff budgeted for the replacement of these six valves. So due to the cost, we're bringing this item to the board to be transparent. In past, I don't think you've saw things like this simply because it was in the approved capital budget. So we just, we just get to buy it. So along with what we've been doing for the past year, we want to bring this to the board. We reached out and received three proposals. They're very close. The one that we're presenting today is for eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents from Core and Main, a waterworks provider, just like the two that we've received from Ferguson and Western Water Works. The other two bidders are within two dollars of each other. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Director Martin? Director Meyer?
I just have a curiosity question for you, Mr. Friend. I understand why we're replacing the valve, even though it's not, it's still operate them. So we don't want any downtime and that's what we're trying to prevent by doing the valve now. So what do you do with this valve that still has some life in it? Do they rebuild it? We get credit for it? Send it to a third world country? What, what do we do with it? Off that scrap man or?
Director, that's a great question. So I will say we did replace some of the vital components, but if we don't replace the valve or at least replace the components that are going, that are starting to deteriorate, it will fail. So that's, so what staff did is they priced out the components like, again, without having something to point out to you. I'm speaking Greek. There is a middle part of the body called a power unit body that we replaced it. It's almost sixty-five hundred dollars and it's a vital component. And what it's doing is it's, it's deteriorated so bad that O-ring's replacement is not correcting the matter. So when it fails, it'll fail in not allowing it to open slowly and creating that hammer, not allowing it to close slowly and creating that surge, causing other issues to break or completely fail and let it reverse flow. So the idea is, is it was cheaper to go ahead and replace it. And when we're done with it, it'll, it'll go into our, what we call our boneyard and it'll go in for recycling. Any, any replaceable parts, like again, without getting too detailed and geeked out on the matter, there are some control, pilot controls that make this automatic. That's the simplest way to say it. Those parts aren't really bad, so we'll take those as spares and we'll use those as replacements as we go into the future years of maintenance. They get maintained as, as much as twice a year and some only once a year, but they're on annual maintenance.
Great answer. Thank you, Mr. Friend.
Director Duff?
Thank you for this presentation and I know that it's, it's new for you, but I think our public needs to know how much maintenance of, of our water costs. And I think it's good for them to see that for just simple parts, it's a lot of money. And so I appreciate you taking the time to educate us all. I have one question. I don't see any mention of any part warranty from them.
I will bring that information back to you. I couldn't tell you most of the items that we buy off the shelf or have installed by a contractor have a one-year, different from the labor, but I would expect that there's at least a one-year, some are ninety days, but I can bring that back to you Monday.
And, and also just to verify with that warranty, our staff installing it doesn't void it?
No.
Okay, just making sure.
Not a great question. That's a great question. So the budget that we have, the capital budget that was approved, covered labor and materials. It's, the budget itself is still going to have twenty-five thousand dollars left and we estimate it higher for the cost at the time that the prices were higher. And the labor should run somewhere around thirty-five hundred dollars for this item, but it does not void it. We do this.
I trust our staff. I don't mind our staff being the ones who touch our things. I prefer it. But I just want to make sure it doesn't void any warranty on the parts or, or hurt us in that way. So thank you for looking into that for me.
Will do.
Vice President?
Yeah, I have some questions, just because I looked at some stuff. What's? So Western Water Works submitted theirs on seven twelve, their quote, right? Which expired on the eleventh. The other two came in well over a month after that. Was there just a delay in getting those quotes?
That's a great question. I asked the same question. I received, so the quotes all had expired. And the other company said they're the same cost. Core and Main provided one with a lower cost. So nothing was shared with the others. This is.
No, it's just, it's odd that that, that was seven twelve, the next one was eight twenty-three, the next one was eight thirty. So question two, so in Western Water Works, they say for valves, estimated lead times for materials is four to eight weeks. Did they give you any ETA for the, when you can expect these to come in?
So all three companies are representative, represent, you know, they're, they're manufacturer reps of Clayval and they have to be built. And regardless of who we buy them from, we're going to go for the best price. So even though Core and Main doesn't have it, it'll likely be the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the difference is, is some of these products that we go after, we, we can only, we can't go direct. We can go to the same waterworks vendors that we've used for, for eons. And we just go through that process. So some are exactly the same number, some manipulate by a dollar or two, but the timeframe is the same. There's just, they don't have these types of valves sitting there waiting for the, the water district of.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, I appreciate the fact that that they actually have that information there. So you have an idea of, you know, you're looking for, for meter boxes, you're looking at twelve to twenty-four weeks. So I think that's information that's kind of important for us to understand. So.
That information is still important because we still have some long lead items. We still have supply chain issues. We have some of the brass, and I know this is on the subject, but as far as supply chain issues, some of these are, they're saying fourteen weeks, eighteen weeks. So yes, we can, we could hold on for eight to ten weeks.
Okay.
While we're on the valve education, what's the life of one of these?
So the valves that we currently have are at least twenty-seven years old because they've been here since I've been here. I will say this, the valves that are there are Clayval. They are going to be plumbed the same and built the same. The, they've changed some of their options and the options that we're going with today are going to be epoxy coated. And that means the material will be painted a blue color with an epoxy coating that will allow them to have a longer life cycle. I will say that there were a hodgepodge of parts within it that have some epoxy coating. The reason for that, I use, we use, we had a disc retainer go out. So we took a disc retainer off the shelf and we replaced it. So you'll have raw material with epoxy coated material and the raw material still continued to degrade at a faster rate. So the new valves will come, they'll all be epoxy coated. The rest of the material will be either stainless steel or bronze. The valve itself should at least last, I would say thirty years. The, the hydrol, probably, I'm sorry, the main body will probably likely longer than that. But there are a lot of wear and tear. There's a bunch of moving parts and they do annual maintenance. And one, that's one of the things that we do. We make sure that they're, they operate smoothly. We rely on them. They're automatic. And if we don't maintenance them, they don't do their jobs. So.
And that's part of the valve exercise program that we started doing?
It's part of a maintenance program. So we actually have a valve maintenance program. We have a clay valve maintenance program. We have blow offs and bar hydrant and, yeah. Bronze and.
As long as we're on education now, I was wondering, can we, we have those, our, our young apprentices and sometimes we have tours are going through. Can we like get a bandsaw and cut some of that in half and put it on display somewhere so that you can use it as an educational tool?
I tell you, that's a great idea. I, I could work with staff. I can tell you also that companies like Clayval, they're out, you know, they're out of Newport Beach and they, with today's technology, that was what I was hoping to do was provide their interactive video that shows you where the water comes in and the valve opens up and it does all this. It was a bit much, but I wanted to take little tidbits of it. We can do that. A lot of times what they do is they, when they retire them out, they polish them out, they, they chrome plate them. And I don't know if we want to do that. It doesn't have any other significance as far as age, but we can look at that. We'll keep them around until we determine what's a good use for them.
It's, it's up to you guys. It was just a suggestion. So whatever you can.
Yeah, today's technology allows us to look at that video on a video and they're so interactive. It's, it's neat. I wish it was around twenty-five years ago.
Any other valve questions?
I'm ready for valve questions.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, authorization for purchase of replacement heavy equipment as approved in the capital budget. It is recommended that the general manager be authorized to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty-four John Deere two-one-zero P skip loader, heavy equipment from R D O Equipment Co. For a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars as approved in the fiscal year capital budget. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our Director of Operations, Danny Friend, to provide you some information on this item. Danny?
Good afternoon. I don't believe I need to go into what a tractor is, a skip loader. I don't apologize necessarily for not having a presentation on this one. However, back in two thousand twenty-three, actually before that, we, we look at our equipment, we determine whether, what maintenance, what condition it's in. We determined also that having a tier-two diesel motor, that we couldn't sell that equipment in California, that it would soon be a time that we would have to get rid of that equipment due to air emissions. So knowing that we need to replace equipment, staff filed, or what do you call it? Applied for a A Q M D, South Coast A Q M D grant called a two thousand twenty-three Carl Moyer Program. It's designed to take older equipment, such as our, our case, a tier-two motor. And part of that is to decommission them and they, they'll give us costs towards the purchase of a new, a new piece of equipment. This skip loader should have been replaced probably six, seven months ago, to be honest with you. Just because we've been nickel and diming a few things that we would rather have not spent money on. Unfortunately, we were waiting for this grant, so I don't want to sound like I'm not happy for the grant. We're happy to receive a grant for fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars towards new equipment. But I will say that this purchase is, is for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. John Deere two-ten P, it's a skip loader. We'll use this equipment at the Horton plant. We'll use it to take care of pond maintenance and take care of ripping the bottoms. Two ten P. It's a skip loader. We'll use this equipment at the Horton plant. We'll use it to take care of pond maintenance and take care of ripping the bottoms. Uh, the, the. Grant itself also covers as long as we use our dismantler, allows us to travel. As long as, also will take us to load in the truck, take it to the dismantler, they'll dismantle it free of cost. So along with that, we don't have to pay an additional cost as long, as long as we use one of the dismantlers that are provided. So. Let's see here. I don't know if I have any other things to talk about, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President.
So we can't sell that one to a third world country, what you're saying.
Um, I believe it can go to Mexico. I believe I always, I'm, I'm hesitant on that because we also had a, um. A, a vector, a, a gap vac truck that we sold that was also a similar case. And. I was told we couldn't sell it in any state in California and it could go to Mexico, but it had to go a special route. So I don't know if that's still applicable. So I think what they're doing now is they don't want us to do that. And that's why they're dismantling them. So, yeah. If we could, we would.
Director Martin?
No.
Director Martin. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion items, we have item nineteen Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility update. General Manager.
Um, very little to update. As you know, we're getting ready for our ribbon cutting on Friday, September twenty seventh at nine thirty AM. Inviting everyone, including the public to attend our ribbon cutting. Uh, we are working with SCE to be able to build the, finish the conveyance line and move that forward. We've gone back and forth a couple of times recently, but I think we finally got a final version now. I thought we had a final version a month ago, but. There was some additional changes by SCE. Like it's four years ago as well. So, uh. I believe the tentative plan is to start that project back up at the end, uh, end of September, and then it will be ready for October. But that won't stop us from starting up the plant and doing other things. So that concludes the update. If there's any questions, I'd be more than willing.
Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin?
Nope. I, I have one is the, uh, retention pond or the ponds out there. Is there any water, anything in them now?
No, there's not. We've not started up the plant and we've not started moving water through the plant, I guess is a better comment.
I, I asked that question because when we were at the, uh. The conference, people would ask me, where's Mission Springs Water District at? So I would say, well, if you're going down west and they would say, yeah, well, you're going west down the freeway. And you see the gene archery sign. Oh yeah, we know where that's at. So when you get about a mile or so past that. You look to the right and you'll see our new sixty eight million dollar treatment plant and that. I don't think it has any water in the pond yet, but we were having our grant opening and so that's how I just got told everybody where we were located. So now when they drive by there, they see nothing but desert around it and wondering how we're operating.
And I have nothing further, so thank you. Item twenty, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update.
Thank you, President Sewell. Our update for this particular item will be, uh, on Monday. Um, but I do want to thank those who attended the planning commission meeting on Tuesday. Where we, uh, the item did pass and received four O, well, the four board members that were there. Uh, the presentation was rather quick. Um, there was very little comments, but there were some changes. So that along with some of the other, um, approved, conditions of approval, I'm sure that Alvin will be able to talk to those in more detail on Monday. So thank you.
Any questions, comments? Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, the consent agenda consists of. Four items this month, the approval of minutes, item twenty one, item twenty two, register of demands. Item twenty three, accept amendment to contract agreement with Timmons Group for the complete. Deployment of the RGIS Enterprise Utility Network and City Works. As well as item twenty four, board compensation. Would any board member like to pull any of these items for discussion today?
We, we are prepared to give a presentation on item twenty three. Okay, the Timmons contract. Yeah, typical.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. General Manager Macy, uh, good afternoon to the board. Kurt, I do need a. Web interface to log into the GIS.
Yes, this is a no cost change. It's, it's more schedule and scope, but we wanted to bring it to you because. Uh, it is a million dollar contract and with Ryan here, he's been able to work with Timmons, change some things and, and, and improve it. And I just wanted to give an opportunity for him to provide what we're, what we are doing, where we're at. And also he is giving a presentation in Palm Springs. Next month, and this will be sort of a dry run, if you will, for him to provide some of the information.
Great.
What the status with Timmons is and part of the, um, amendment to that, uh, contract, uh, concerning. Um, the usefulness of the utility network as I have seen necessary changes. So in this process, a few schema changes were, uh, necessary. Um, Timmons proposed that we utilize the RGIS Utility Network Essentials Data Model. Unfortunately, that essentials data model does not facilitate any, um, identifying factors. Especially for water meter, uh, locations. So I had their staff, uh, amend their contract to. Uh, add in account ID numbers, uh, split Citus address schema. And APN numbers, uh, to fully associate water meters with their actual location. And this will actually, uh, allow us to expand the GIS functionality beyond, uh, what City Works can, um, supply. Uh, with our, um, management schema. With the schema strategy, um, for, uh, asset management. Uh, we're looking at an environment, uh, where I can edit the environment or our field crew can edit the environment depending on. Uh, what they're doing, what they're updating, what they're changing. So the current, uh, Timmons contract, um, is looking to stand up the vertical and horizontal asset direct transfer. From the utility network into City Works. And after they're finished with that process, I'll be using the, uh, added location, uh, schema through this co- um. Contract change to, uh, develop projects for additional reporting tools and capital improvement projects. Uh, a lot of this location access will allow us to, uh, integrate a lot of the data within our public portal. And internal portal. Um, for example, um, I have developed this as a, a, a test layer. And you can see when you zoom in on the map. One of the functions on our, um. Public, uh, facing. Um. I don't know. Where is that? So this, um, pop up here, there's an additional link to view one of our sewer maps. See if I can go full screen on this thing. Yeah, there we go. We'll just pop, pop the app out here and. We'll up one of these. Now we can view the map. And it pops up one of our, uh, sewer infrastructure maps for each associated grid. Currently, this is set up on our, uh, public website as an APN base link. Um, and this layer can substitute for, uh, that integration. So there's a, a lower feature, um. Set on the, uh, website itself. So associated with, uh, CIP projects, here you have the terrace site rehabilitation, uh, photo application that I, uh, developed. It's an example of our vertical and horizontal asset, uh, maintenance plans that we can integrate with the GIS itself. So, uh, our fellow staffer, uh, Will Witten went out and took these pictures, um, around the terrace, uh. Site. And each one of these, uh, points can pop up, uh, photos of our infrastructure. And in addition to photos on the, uh, GIS side, we can also amend information. Uh, about the vertical assets such as, uh, new pumps, new lines and, uh, other new apparatus that. And track their life cycles and so forth. The current project, uh, that's determined by, uh, Citus address is the LCRR. Uh, lead, lead and copper, uh, state mandatory, um, detailed inventory requirement. Uh, this spreadsheet is being filled out for the entire district via GIS data available. And the, uh, next project for requirement by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. The risk and resilience assessment for the district and the emergency response plans for the district. Um, can have GIS component, components to, uh, assist with graphs, charts and mapping applications to. Uh, further, um, certify each one of those reports. And this, uh, goes into, uh, a lot of the information where, uh, if we're certified. Uh, for the RRA and the ERP with the, uh, Environmental Protection Agency, it. Will also give us a leg up when we go apply for grant funding. Any questions?
Any questions from the board, Director Martin?
Yes, I, I do the, uh. If you don't mind, since you're practicing, do you mind going back to where you showed the wells? Yes, sir. Right there. Is. I guess. Mr. Friend would probably be able to answer this question, whether it. This is, this is the, uh. Well. Well, it's up in the. Over in that direction, correct? With the housing, you pulled in there, the housings are, are on both sides, the main interest. And on the other side is a, the street and a, a little bit of an open lot there.
Um. I'll tell you, it's Terrace Way and Fourth Street is, is this way I can say it. This is Terrace Reservoir. There are three reservoirs. This is six million dollars or six million gallons. This is the neat part. I wish, uh, I wish I would have had this slide for my presentation earlier. If I may. Yeah. We are looking at the station. Uh, this is a booster station. This is not a well. There's shallow pumps. They take water from the reservoirs and they boost it to a higher zone. Part of this, this is phase two of our training. Uh, the blue valves that you see in the picture, um, are the booster pump control wells. The motors are behind them in this picture and then behind that is the reservoir. So this is a reservoir site with a booster station and it's specifically Terrace.
And there's what, three reservoirs there?
Three, two million gallon reservoirs, correct.
Okay. So it's the same site I'm thinking of. So to the. East. Here, there, there's another little well there. I don't know if it's part of ours or is that privately owned?
It's private.
Privately owned there.
Yeah. This is the hot water zone. This is part of the emission or the desert hot spring zone. So there's many private wells in that area.
All right. I wasn't sure if we, I, for some reason I thought we might have owned that, but.
Not in that condition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Friend.
Yeah. Thanks for letting me. Uh, that's, that's perfect. You should have been before we.
Director Duff, any questions?
This is great. And I think you did a great job. Um. I, I think in, in the future, I see these as being cameras. So that when you get an alert, you're able to look at the camera and see what's going on before you send people out. I see that being our future. But this is great, great work. I look forward to the savings in our staff time and, and the. Um, increase in response time that this is going to provide. So good work. Thank you very much.
Vice President.
So you had talked about this, uh. Maybe in a previous slide or two, and you don't need to go back, but the, uh, the, the public having access to this, is that correct?
The, uh, public has access to.
Grid stuff.
Currently the grid stuff.
But not the pictures and stuff.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's.
Yeah.
My concern.
We use, we use these, uh, pictures as a, um, example. Um, we, we all know that most of our infrastructure is safely fenced off, but. Occasionally pu- members, the public will go out there with their cell phone cameras and such. Um, and do what they want, but, and that, that'll, uh, factor into our risk and resiliency and our emergency response plans in the next two years.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. And, um. I'll just echo Director Duff's comments. I think this is really taking us a step further towards the future. Um. Increasing our efficiency is a great job on that. Uh, you mentioned, I don't know what word you use, but they could adjust their environment, like our, our field guys. Um, so you're saying they'll have access to this through their tablets in the field that they could. If something say was different, they could add to this.
Yeah. So in the, uh, City Works, uh, environment, it's basically a work order tracking system. And anytime the field staff goes out to make a change to any of the apparatus, whether it's pump. Uh, reservoir, pipe, meter, uh, clean out, uh, whatnot. Um. They can take pictures, they bring, record notes, they can input dates that any changes were made. And City Works online is actually, um, one of the more powerful tools that sits on, uh, GIS. And they're very, uh, well known for being able to make changes, enhancements and, uh, progressive, uh, adjustments. On, on my side, provide that functionality for the staff.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you, Brian. And do we have anything further? Any other items we want to discuss today for consent agenda?
Yeah, I have, uh, one thing I want to bring up. It's, um. Item twenty four, uh, subsection B, additional night stay at Paradise Point Hotel. Um, Urban Water Institute Board Meeting. And, uh. As you recall, the, uh. Conference started that day, but it wasn't until one o'clock, I think in the afternoon, something like that. Uh. I had to attend a board meeting among the board of directors, which caused me to be there and have to be there by about nine o'clock. And so I'm requesting that the night stay previously, uh, on there would be, would be granted.
Okay.
Because of that, that's what it's for.
Okay. That's, uh, I think completely understandable. I know a previous item on this agenda is involvement in CSDA and, um. It's something we encourage the board members to get, um, to participate on different, uh. Groups like Urban Water and CSDA and Aqua and traditionally those expenses are covered. So. Anything further?
I, I just want to. I don't remember, not, not, I remember you being on the board, but I don't remember when we did our list. That that was on there. Um, and so I, we may need to look and see that if it's not on there, that you were listed on there.
Okay, I, I wasn't aware.
I, I'm not saying it's not, I just don't remember.
I don't either.
And I, I, I want to make sure. And I I I want to make sure that if it's not, that we're actually, that it's on there because.
Because you're saying uh, we have urban water as all directors able to.
Right, but if he's on the board, that needs to be, that should be on there.
Yeah, additionally.
Okay.
So to make sure that when he has board meetings, that he's actually compensated. If 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 it's not on there, I just don't, I don't recall. Um. And then I had a conversation, we might want to think about if we can get that on the agenda for. Monday, adding the Palm Springs Unified School District. That was not on our calendar, but I know we have all gotten the save the date. Or even the invitation. Um, and we used to, that used to be on there as part of groundwater, but.
We can add that to the.
Yeah.
To the discussion.
Okay, so that'd be item C on.
Yes.
Twenty four.
Legislative, yeah.
Legislative breakfast.
Legislative breakfast.
Okay.
It's October first.
Moving on to the uh director's reports, anyone like to go today?
No.
Monday? Right? Item twenty six, General Manager's Report, uh Finance Report and Public Affairs Report, either of these today?
Uh, we are prepared to give the financial report today. Would you like to hold off on that? Okay.
Thank you, General Manager Macy and President Sewell, members of the board. In the uh G M report, what we present is basically the uh current jobs, uh adding the uh um new jobs that we added for the fiscal year. Uh, there is not a, as you noticed, a financial summary report. Uh, we are in the middle of the audit and we are updating those numbers and when we are completed, we'll bring you back basically everything. Uh, through June thirtieth and then on after that, once we get everything caught up, but we are working on those numbers. Um, there is nothing that I've seen that uh is a significant uh change. Um, I did set a deadline for all managers to submit all of the invoices from previous. Uh, year through August thirty first so that we can cut the year end and provide those numbers to the auditor. Uh, if some of them don't don't make it through June thirtieth, uh, I did warn them that they were going to be posted. On the new year and affect New Year's budget as opposed to the budget they belong to. Uh, but if you see any of those, just let me know and I can help with those answers.
Okay, any questions or comments? Director Duff?
Staff, please listen and submit your things so that we have our money and our budget correct. I know that it can be frustrating to have to do a lot of paperwork, but we depend on you to provide that paperwork. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Arjo. And Public Affairs will be Monday? Did you have anything?
No.
Item twenty seven, District Council Comments?
Yes, just briefly, um, on the Labor and Employment Matters that we assist the district with. Um, I just wanted to report to the board that we have Rob Cupberth. That's now assisting the district on those matters. And then also, um, we worked with some of the items that we've worked on recently in addition to Labor and Employment Matters. Uh, as uh General Manager Macy mentioned, we've worked with district staff. On the power purchase agreement and the lease with Titan Mission Springs that you're going to be considering on on Monday. Um, also worked with the staff on updating the administrative code, which will be uh discussed on Monday. And then we prepared an audit letter, uh, which is an annual thing that we do for you. Um. And then also assisted the district and outside council in securing an easement from S E. You're familiar with that item. And then also, uh, we worked with staff um in reviewing the Amazon Improvement Agreement. That you have in your packet. And so. Um, also, just briefly, I don't really want to get into a a long discussion about this in open session. But I wanted to report back uh on the lawsuit that was filed by S C E. Challenging the unitary tax that we did communicate with County Council. Um, the defense in that case is well represented. All the counties are represented by County Council. Los Angeles has taken the lead on behalf of the counties. And because the State Board of Equalization is the entity that sets the methodology for establishing. The valuation of the assets that are taxed, they're represented by the California Attorney General's Office and their lead counsel for all of the defendants. Um, the sense from the conversations that we've had. Uh, were that there there would be no value added in having us participate in the litigation at this stage. So I just wanted to report back to you on that.
Great. And uh, close session today? Any questions or comments for counsel? Director Duff?
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for contacting the county. It alleviates some of our anxiety and not knowing that our big brothers are. Remembering us and looking after us. So thank you for bringing that to their attention and quelling that worry. Appreciate it.
Item twenty eight, Director Comments and Requests, consists of Director General Comments, Director Requests for Future Agenda. Items and Director Requests for Future Meetings. Uh, Director Martin?
Uh, Monday.
Director Martin? Director Duff? Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday's a day.
And with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.